Items on the agenda, and there's three minutes, so please step forward to the podium. And spell your last name for the record. We'll start with public comment first, it's at the beginning of the meeting. On any item on the agenda. And please spell your last name for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, Thomas Slattery and Nancy Snow had to step out for a minute, so...
Go ahead and start. Go ahead. She said she'd be back in.
I want to speak on agenda item number one, the height and density matter. At the neighborhood meetings, it was stated that this was just to apply to 38th Avenue. Now I read here, the thing is citywide. I'm smelling a bait and switch, frankly. A real bait and switch. I'd like to make the comments I made at the neighborhood meeting. The city has yet to prove it can develop the areas that have already been exempted from the charter restrictions. Cabela's is the prime example. It's still sitting there vacant. This is probably the best site in the city for development of commercial facilities that can bring real sales tax. You don't need high-rise buildings for that. And being between two freeways, I don't see how it's suitable for mixed-use development. Who wants to live between two freeways? I'd also like to review the history of the charter limits. Many years ago, there was a proposed development ordinance in the city that would provide for a 10-story high-rise building in any zoning district of this city. It got shouted down. A little bit later, a former city council actually authorized the 10-story building. It was in no way allowed by the zoning codes. It was for the benefit of a bunch of rich uraniums. That is when the public took it to referendum and won, and then initiated the height and density restrictions that went into the city charter. It was felt necessary for the protection of this city, and in my opinion, it's still necessary. Now, if you look at planning in the West today, from Los Angeles to Phoenix, to Las Vegas, to Denver, and every suburb, and small city and town in between, their master plans call for massive development. There is no water to support this development. The West is dry. Nobody wants to admit it, but that's the fact. At least the newspapers are starting to raise these questions. And also, I think if any group wants to repeal any element of the charter, it needs to go door-to-door with the petitions and get the people's consent. Not come to council and have the council put it on the ballot.
That's time, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Snow. And I have a request. It's very frustrating for citizens and for me when you invite a group to join you in the study session. But an ordinary citizen gets three minutes and sits out there. 2020 is not a member of the city council, but I understand they will be a part of the study session tonight. So I would like to ask that representing Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods, that I sit at the table and that I participate in the whole discussion about the change to the charter. I ask Mr. Mayor.
Well, go ahead and do your three minutes, and then we'll come back to that when that agenda item comes up.
Frankly, after 2020 gave their...
Well, go ahead and do your three minutes, and then we can... Go ahead and do your three minutes first for your public. Next, we'll have to waive its rules.
Back up a little what Tom said, but a few months ago, I don't know whose this is. Some members of 2020 asked me to meet with them ostensibly, they said. They wanted to know the whole history of... Did I break something? Sorry. What did I do? Anyway. People from 2020 met with me and were very courteous, at least at first, wanted to know the whole background of how the height and density limits got in the charter. But after a while, it was pretty evident to me that they wanted to persuade me of a couple of things. One, developers just would not come to the city unless they got rid of the height and density limits, and how absolutely essential it was that we needed increased density. And of course, they were also, I think, hoping to find out whether United Neighborhoods would oppose this charter change, and I can tell you, oh, yes. First, when you talk tonight, will somebody please be honest about the fact that the big push for this comes primarily for two pieces of property in the city? You know, one on 38th, I think in Chase, and another over 32nd or 33rd in Ames. Why would you even consider changing the charter because of two pieces of property? Like Tom, I adamantly oppose the council putting this on the ballot by itself. It's really an unfair advantage. We went out and got petitions door-to-door to get the height and density. Obviously, I don't mind if it gets on the ballot. But when I asked this little committee I met with to do that, they sort of intimated they had your votes already. They didn't need to do that. Anyway, please, will you be a little more even-handed about this? When you put it on the ballot, and they have a lot more money than the average citizens, they can get that passed. But I want to ask you the most important thing. How would this improve the city? Every study ever done shows that multifamily costs the city money. This proposal also does not at all comply with the neighborhood revitalization strategy that said we had too many apartments and too many multifamily. I think we still have an awful lot of multifamily and rental housing. And so, what happened to the council assurance, I realize a lot of those council members are gone, that the last charter change would only be done for urban renewal? And all of a sudden, now you want to get rid of it for the whole city? So please, what I'm asking you, please do not vote to put it on the ballot by your vote. Obviously, if they get enough petitions, I'm all in favor of petition rights. You have to put it on the ballot. But I don't think it's fair that you don't do that. I'm sure I've used up my three minutes. Have I?
No, because you had that. I didn't time you when you were changing the batteries. You got 11 seconds left.
Please, but I would very much like to join you if I could. Thank you.
Please step forward. Anybody else? Please spell your last name for the record.
Hello, council. My name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. I was looking over the agenda tonight, and it appears Mr. Dahl will be speaking on open meetings, which is something personally I'm usually very interested in. I hope that you take the discussion very seriously. As an active citizen, this is the first step, really, to community involvement and education. Anything that you guys can do to make, you know, government more open and transparent, I support and hope you guys do too, and not take the bare minimum of the law. Specifically, though, when it comes to open meetings, I, in the past, have had concerns and difficulties when when it comes, I guess, to council planning retreat that you all do every year, and that there's no meetings or notes or recordings that come from this. But at the same time, that meeting is cited a lot by staff and the council yourself, so... So just something to bring in the discussion, hopefully, you know, trying to open up all the items that you discuss policy at to the public, so... Other than that, I got a couple more minutes, and since I was able here to make it tonight, I saw also marijuana regulations were going to be on discussion. I personally don't have any personal, you know, interest in medical or recreational marijuana, but I do have an interest in the will of the voters, and it was pretty clear at the polls that they support recreational marijuana. And at the same point, too, my generation also has, I guess, more liberal views on this, and again, very clearly stated, too, by the last election. So I'd like to have Wheat Ridge be open to business, no more than the state regulations, which are currently being debated. And like I say, bring us open to business, and even look at really the rules that were put on for the medical marijuana, which kind of locked in a core group of, you know, cartel of existing businesses, but really don't allow for expansion. And kind of clear up some of that protectionism that exists there, and allow some new businesses to come to Wheat Ridge, because we could use it, so... Thank you, council. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Eugene Shirley, S-H-I-R-L-E-Y. West 38th Avenue is a waste of time and money. I would like the council to stop spending the money, stop what they're doing, and go to the public. I agree with these two people that talked. Consumers and citizens have to have more input on study sessions. And the town meeting that we had originally, District 1 and 2, a good number of people fought 38th and wanted, because of the 44th Avenue problem it would cause. So, and I just got my driver's safety class. Every three years, you have to learn how to drive again. We brought up the idea that you have that reverse parking. And the instructor says, "What?" He says, "Reverse parking angles in one street?" He says, "That's hazardous. It's ridiculous. It's difficult, especially for old people like me." I would suggest that you reline the reverse parking. You're wasting money on arts and stuff. Valenti's had a nice painting there. I don't know how much you spent, and Valenti spent so much. Now it's painted over purple, new decor and everything. That's fine, but you're still wasting money. That entrance on Kipling and I-70, that looks nice. Spent money, but it's going to be torn down with a new intersection here shortly. $5 million is certainly an experiment at the taxpayers' expense. And I suggest that you go to the vote of the people and get the true answers what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Kelly Brooks, B-R-O-O-K-S, and I live at 4100 Dudley Street in District 4. I'm here as a resident of the city of Wheat Ridge, as a board member, and as the chair of the Encouraged Development Committee at Wheat Ridge 2020. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and on behalf of many of the board members and committee members that have shown up this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank City Council for all their efforts in supporting Wheat Ridge moving forward. In the last several years, there have been a variety of wonderful examples of policies and initiatives that have been put in place to foster this. The development and adoption of the comprehensive plan, the implementation of mixed-use zoning, and the dedication to fostering change and revitalization along 38th Avenue, just to name a few. We, as a city with your leadership, have made huge progress. However, there remains a barrier to the city's ability to attract quality development. And that is why the Board of Directors for Wheat Ridge 2020 has taken the position that Wheat Ridge should follow national best practices and regulate heightened density through the zoning code, as opposed to the city charter, which stifles the conversation and limits investment in the city. I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. I'm also a licensed architect, and I'm the father of three little kids. As a resident of Wheat Ridge, I want to see both diversity in commercial and residential opportunities. I'd love to see the prospect of more shopping, more dining, and more entertainment. Simply put, I want to see more investment in Wheat Ridge properties. The architect side of me would love to see our city able to attract quality developments that foster first-rate architecture. Architecture that responds to the community and helps cultivate a vibrancy that the city of Wheat Ridge needs. And lastly, as a father, I want to see us progress towards a future in a community where my kids want to grow up, live, and work in. So Brett is here to explain a little bit more about the particulars of the progress we've been making at Wheat Ridge 2020 and what we think are our next steps. However, on behalf of Wheat Ridge 2020 and the other committee members that are here and the board members, I'd like you to know that we're ready to help educate our neighbors and the community with regard to this issue, and help move the city of Wheat Ridge forward together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
Hello. My name is Jeff Fainey, and that's F-A-I-N-E. I live at 38th and Marshall in District 1. My wife and I recently purchased our first home in Wheat Ridge in May of 2012. Soon after I purchased my house, I became a member of Wheat Ridge 2020. I saw the sign on the building and visited the website. I liked what they're doing, and I decided to get involved. As a member of Wheat Ridge 2020, I've had the opportunity to speak with multiple real estate developers who are interested in completing projects in the Wheat Ridge city limits. However, due to the current heightened density restrictions in the city charter, these projects don't make it past their feasibility studies. And as a result, they've been forced to take their ideas and their money to other municipalities. I find this to be very unfortunate. Many of these people I've spoken with have really great ideas, and I think some really neat projects that the city would be interested in. I know I'd personally like to see more shopping and entertainment, and just more investment in existing properties along our major thoroughfares. I believe it's important for all communities to constantly be evolving and moving forward, and I would encourage the city council to adopt policies to help us move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else that'd like to speak in their public comment before we move forward? Someone have a cellphone beeping or something? Could you please silence or turn off your cellphones for the city council meeting, please? Okay, I guess the first item on the agenda is the Wheat Ridge 2020 updates. Brett, is that you coming forward? And then, council, you had a request from United Neighborhoods to sit at the table to discuss this. Do you want to waive your council rules and allow her to speak or not? That's your call. Somebody want to make a consensus either way or not?
I would like to make a consensus and we allow Wheat Ridge United Neighbors to sit in on the conversation.
All in favor of that? Just raise your hands, please. One, two, three, four, five. Make sure you turn on your mics, and I guess Nancy, why don't you sit over here in the corner here, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and everybody gathered. Thanks especially to Wheat Ridge 2020 members and our Encouraged Development Committee, our board, and our subcommittee for being here tonight. I appreciate that. So tonight, I have a few things to discuss. There are no decision points tonight. I just want to emphasize that. It's really an update. We were invited to be here. It actually took us a few months to get on the agenda. So tonight, I'm going to ensure that you are all up to speed as to what has been done around the issue of height and density in the past. I'm going to update you on the work that has been done since the last time we met on this issue, and I wanted to invite you to participate in what is coming next. So first, I was going to show you the top-of-the-hour video, which, Patrick, do you want to give it one last try and see if it'll work? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Up through 2008, there was many parts of the city that were very hard to redevelop because of the heightened density limitations of the city charter. The city council brought those changes to the voters. They were approved. That basically said that heightened density restrictions were lifted in our urban renewal areas. One part of the city that really benefited, that had it under urban renewal, was 44th and Wadsworth on the southeast corner. That location has sat vacant for 40 years. With the heightened density changes and the teamwork between urban renewal and the city of Wheat Ridge and private developers, that site has become a viable place for people to live, work, and play. We're going to have 88 units for senior apartments, plus other amenities coming in 2013 and 2014. This is called smart growth and the least restrictive environment.
Wheat Ridge is fairly unique, I would say. We have restrictions on maximum building heights and maximum residential densities contained within our charter. Charter is essentially the constitution of a city. We're a home rule city. Typically, you see land use regulations, whether it be parking issues, or what buildings you can build on what properties, or more specifics, like the height and density of development occurring in your zoning code or your zoning and development code. It's a little more typical tool to regulate it that way. The difference between the charter and the zoning code, in our case, is that the charter can only be amended by a vote of citizens, so it's a fairly high-level tool.
Well, no cities remain static, and we always need to be thinking about what we want our city to feel like and to look like. What activities, what housing choices, kinds of businesses and development we want to attract. And so what happened in 2008 was the citizens said, "We're okay in these specific corridors with allowing..." with allowing a public process to determine where and how and what's appropriate that might let us choose to exceed that heightened density restrictions that are set in the charter." What the charter does is effectively shut down the public conversation about that. If it's simply retained in the zoning code, that allows a public process. That allows each of us to come forward and say, "We like this specific idea, this specific project, and we do see that allowing a greater density perhaps, or a greater height perhaps, would make that a more productive use of our community."
In certain areas of our community right now, it is difficult for us to get that density or that height in there because of some of the regulations that are currently within the city charter. These would be projects that certainly would enhance the community. When I talk to the community members out there, they would like more opportunities for shopping, more restaurant dining. They don't want to leave the community and go to other areas of Denver. They'd like to stay here. That's not going to occur until we can get that density and that height changed within our charter to bring in more of the population that's going to attract that retail use.
You know, what we're doing on 38th Avenue, our main street, it's nascent, it's new, it hasn't gone as far as it could. That's a corridor that we could see live, work, we could see mixed use, we could see great boutiques and services and amenities on the street level with housing above, you know, with lofts or apartments, where people are not bound to maintain large yards if they don't want to, or step right outside and go grab a pizza and a beer. The walkable community concept will really be advanced if we would look to 38th Avenue and, in fact, citywide to relieve ourselves of that trap and that cap.
We're at the Wheat Ridge Town Center Apartments. This is the newest apartment community in Wheat Ridge. It's an 88-unit apartment building restricted exclusively to persons age 62 and up. On this particular site, I think without the height and density allowances that were used by right when we purchased the property, this project would not have been possible. For example, if we would have had only a two- or three-story building, there's no way we could have made economic sense of this transaction.
In 2009, 2A and 2B were ballot measures that allowed zoning code to be the place where we would manage zoning for areas along Kipling, I-70, and Wadsworth Boulevards rather than through the city charter. Managing the zoning through the city charter is not very effective. It kills conversation. Developers see that as a roadblock. Potential investors see that as a roadblock, and they move on to other communities. By getting the assemblage and the zoning in place here at this site, we were able to have those conversations, and we've already seen results with Wazee Partners building this beautiful site behind us.
Without the in-place height and density, this project would not have been possible. Without Urban Renewal Authority coming in, buying the site, taking the time to zone it properly, having the planning department give its input on the concept plan and the master plan, and then providing all of this infrastructure, we wouldn't have been able to create, you know, a building as successful as this.
In Wheat Ridge, we're a largely built-out community, and so what we're looking for are infill projects, just like the one that we're standing at today, where there was something else that was here before, but somebody had the vision to say, "I can make something that's a high-quality product and an improvement to the community." But there needs to be the right and proper environment for that conversation to occur and for that dream to develop.
Wheat Ridge has the opportunity to encourage a lot of smart redevelopment. And what I mean by that is selected parcels within the city that are blighted or dilapidated in need of redevelopment. With a proper set of zoning entitlements, density, you can encourage new development and exciting development, and development that fits within the character of Wheat Ridge.
The city of Wheat Ridge wants to be open for development and open for business. It is hard to say that we are open for business when we kill the conversation by having restrictions in our city charter. So I'm standing here next to Mountain View Apartments at the vacant lot that is adjacent to their site. This Alphy family bought this property eight years ago. They've maintained it very well. However, they're not able to do anything more than what they've done here, which is grow weeds. It is a vacant area because the density of the apartment building, which is very well-maintained, means that nothing else can be developed over here. And we can't even have a conversation about that through the zoning code process because in our city charter, there is a restriction that says the density that that apartment building utilizes is applied to this as well, and therefore, there's nothing that we can do to build something here.
We, as siblings, have a partnership, and we've been looking for investment opportunities. And then this is our first venture into Wheat Ridge, but we have owned this one the longest. But due to some of the frustrations that we've had as far as trying to develop the land that we have that's adjacent to the property because of the density, it's kind of been, we haven't been able to move forward with that.
We've owned this building approximately 10 years. Since we've purchased the building, we've renovated 60% of the units. We did a major amount of landscaping to help improve the appeal from the street because that was the thing we found, we lost most of our customers was when they drove by and were not impressed with what they had to see.
At the time we bought it, the building was 50% occupied because it had not been updated. We took all the money that we were making off the building and put it right back into the building, so now we have 100% occupancy, but it's purely because we've updated the building. Every city has their parameters, their ground rules for building and codes and everything else. It makes common sense to have that. It doesn't make common sense to have a lot like this that sits vacant that is just a dumping ground for people that don't live in the neighborhood. We're not asking to build an eighth-story high-rise, and certainly, it would be better than an RV park.
I certainly feel that a big part of the mission of my department, the Community Development Department, is to present an open-for-business attitude out to the development community. Our mayor has a slogan that he likes to use, which is "Least restrictive environment." And we certainly look for any and all opportunities that we can portray in a meaningful way that we have a fair, but an open and not overly burdensome regulatory environment. At times, the restrictions regarding height and density in the charter don't convey that message, and that's a challenge that we try and work through.
You know, whenever a developer walks into our door, we like to have as many tools in our toolkit that we can use. We're certainly not going to give away this community, but certainly Wheat Ridge for years sat stagnant, and we now want to bring those services to our citizens, safe city, park recreation opportunities, and that's going to incur by us bringing in more commercial development to the city.
In many ways, the city of Wheat Ridge is 20 years behind its neighboring cities. These changes to our building code, the heightened density, and our overall open-for-business, least restrictive environment has helped us become competitive to attract quality business and quality retail and new residents to the city.
As a resident, it's important to me to know that there is a public process in place about how our community develops. And it's great to see with the project behind us how that community conversation can occur and how we can get a great result. We want to do that all across our community and have the same type of process everywhere. Right now, the city charter restricts us, and we need to look at how we can change that so that we can have this process and have a more involved citizenry in how our community develops.
Hopefully, you learned a few things from that, and I want to thank the city for their participation and asking us to participate on that issue for Top of the Hour. That said, I thought it might make sense just to keep our focus on the city perspective for just a moment longer. I've asked Ken Johnstone, one of the things that comes up when we are talking about heightened density and development in the community is what are the policies that the city has put in place to help control how quality development is? Because when I've been talking to the community, I hear this concern about how do we attract quality development? And so I've asked Ken to just kind of refresh your memory on some of the things that have happened recently to that.
Thanks, Britta. Yeah, that's exactly, as we were getting ready for this meeting, Britta had mentioned to me that, you know, one of the challenges that she hears when she talks to developers and members of the public, elected officials, when they grapple with this issue, is, you know, what are we going to get in terms of development? You know, are we going to like what we get if we ease up the charter restrictions in regards to heightened density? So I wanted to speak just really briefly about the two primary tools that we have in play in Wheat Ridge that we hope and we think do a real good job of addressing some of those design issues. We have had in place since 2007 something called the Architectural and Site Design Manual. That was most recently updated fairly comprehensively in 2012, so very, very much a current, currently updated document. And then we also have mixed-use zoning districts. Those mixed-use districts were developed through a public process and adopted through public hearings by council in 2010. And as I mentioned, the ASDM are even more recently updated than those. I don't want to get into a lot of the details, but I will hit on a few of kind of the design topics that those two documents cover. In terms of applicability, the ASDM by ordinance applies to almost all development in the city. It applies to commercial development, industrial development, and multifamily development. So anything except agricultural development and single and two-family dwellings, which are exempted from the applicability of those. It doesn't apply in all instances when looking at existing development and redevelopment of properties or additions to existing commercial and multifamily properties, but it applies to those developments when practical. So those, the mixed-use districts, apply in a few different areas of the city, and the design standards within the mixed-use districts are really embedded into that zoning document. So design regulations pertaining to architecture, site design, parking, landscaping, et cetera, are all embedded right in that mixed-use district. So if you're mixed-use, you have your own design standards. If you're not mixed-use and you're not single-family or duplex, then the ASDM are going to apply to your property. In terms of what types of design parameters are covered, I think architectural standards are first and foremost. And I'll just kind of lump these together in general terms because I think to a large extent, the ASDM and the mixed-use districts really were developed in very similar fashions in terms of what the architectural requirements are, what the site planning concepts are, what the buffering requirements are, adjacent to certain types of residential uses. So architectural standards, they both have a list of permitted materials. Some materials that might be considered less high-quality can be used as accent materials, but they can't be used as a primary material. In addition to the requirements for certain list of permitted materials, there's also a requirement that you use a variety of materials, so it's not just a monolithic structure that uses maybe only one type of material or one type of color. There's also a requirement for both vertical and horizontal variation in those materials. And very importantly, as you get larger wall planes, both horizontally as you go up in the number of stories, and vertically as you get a longer footprint for the building, there's requirements for actual articulation in the footprint. So you can't just build the proverbial square box. You've got to have some ins and outs to that and some architectural details or embellishment that add to the quality and the, sort of, the feel of how a person or a passing motor vehicle would relate to that architecture. They do include requirements related to building heights. The Architectural and Site Design Manual complies with the charter, so you look to really your zoning districts as it applies with the Architectural and Site Design Manual. So if your underlying zoning is C1, then you look to what the height restrictions in the C1 district and et cetera. I mean, those are all kind of standalone, and none of those districts were amended after the charter change. The only zoning districts that have been changed to reflect the restrictions that were granted from relief from the charter in certain parts of the city are in those mixed-use districts. So none of the straight districts, none of the planned districts currently can have heights any greater than what's restricted in the charter. In the mixed-use districts, the mixed-use neighborhood, which was designed principally for corridors like 38th Avenue, for 44th Avenue, other neighborhood types of contexts, that does comply with the charter. So you've got the 35-foot height for mixed-use or residential, and you've got 50 feet for commercial structures based on the charter. In the mixed-use commercial, it allows from four to six stories. Four stories is a used-by-right, as was mentioned in the video. The four-story apartment building that was recently built at 44th and Wadsworth is in that mixed-use commercial district and wouldn't be, wouldn't have been allowed based on the height without that charter amendment being changed and the new mixed-use district being authorized by council. You can go up to six stories if you're with some incentives, notably if you're providing a mixed-use building. So if you've got more than just one single use, whether it be retail and residential or retail and office, or office and residential in a building, then you get an incentive to do that up to six stories. In the mixed-use TOD, which principally would apply only at our, in one location in the city generally, which is at the Future Commuter Rail Station at the end of the Gold Line at roughly 50th and Moore Road, that's allowed from six to eight stories. And again, with that eight stories only being allowed with that incentive approach if you provide mixed use. I think it's real important to note that there are certain buffering and screen requirements when it comes to adjacency to residential uses. If you have parking or a service area adjacent to a residential use, either the ASDM or the mixed-use zoning requires that you provide certain minimum landscaping standards, screen walls, that there's that separation or that buffering between the commercial or mixed-use and the residential use. Very important, as we develop the mixed-use districts, one of the things that we developed to deal with that kind of transition issue is a series of different residential transition requirements, and there's principally three. One is an increased setback in terms of the actual building footprint adjacent to single-family and two-family residential as you go up in the number of stories. So I won't get into the details, but the closer you, the taller building you want to build, the further away you have to be from that residential property line with a landscaped area. Secondly, there's a requirement adjacent to residential that you have, that you step back your building so that when you get up above two stories, if you want to go to three stories, you step the back building, the building back five more feet. If you want to go to four stories, you step it back 10 feet, so that there's kind of a tiered approach to how that new development from a design standpoint relates to established neighborhoods. And then third, there's just a flat-out maximum of four stories if you're within 100 feet of a residential, single-family residential property line. So you can't build more than four stories in those mixed-use districts within 100 feet of a residential property line. So those are kind of in a nutshell. If people have specific questions, I do have those documents here if that comes up this evening. As Britta mentioned, this is obviously a very preliminary discussion, but just wanted to give you some of that context. Just one last thing to mention, and that's in terms of process. I think our message to the community at the time of the 2009 ballot question was very firmly that you're not changing anything, in a sense, if you take something out of the charter. All you're doing, I think the word "conversation" was used a couple times in the video, and we really do view this as a conversation, that the charter change, if that was something that council or the voters went in that direction of, just starts the conversation of what is the right zoning? What are the right design standards? What are the right building heights or numbers of stories? You know, those are sensitive discussions, and we're very sensitive to the importance of those, of those discussions. I'd like to think that the process that we had in the subsequent years in 2010, and then later, as we looked at corridor rezonings, was a worthwhile one in terms of having a number of public meetings and actually an advisory committee that helped develop those mixed-use districts, reflected in the fact that, you know, one of the reasons we have these residential kind of transition and buffering standards is we heard loud and clear, you know, what is and isn't appropriate adjacent to residential. So I would certainly reiterate that commitment to, we don't take zoning lightly. We don't take changes to zoning or new zoning districts lightly. The public process is very important in that, and that would be kind of phase two if there were to be any changes to the charter. I think in addition to the development of the new zoning districts, I'd like to just mention the two corridors that we focused on thus far. Wadsworth, which now has the, largely has the mixed-use commercial zoning, and 38th Avenue, which now largely has the mixed-use neighborhood zoning designation. We had a subsequent, very extensive process talking about the appropriateness of rezoning those corridors to a mixed-use designation with the community and with the property owners. So really, both conversations, and that, at council's direction, ended up in, you know, some properties being excluded. And I think that's just a reflection of the fact that that public hearing process and that public process is, is real important.
Thanks, Ken. With that context in mind, let me rewind to May 2012. You all had a study session where this topic was discussed with Wheat Ridge 2020. I, at the time, was either in the process of or just had my baby, who's now 10 months old, so that gives a little bit of context. But my understanding of the direction that night was that Wheat Ridge 2020 was to prepare community education and a campaign about heightened density. And so the Encouraged Development Committee of Wheat Ridge 2020 created a subcommittee on heightened density. And this is all done under our board's resolution that, and I should, I just want to clarify from the comments earlier, it is the Wheat Ridge 2020 Board Position. it is the Wheat Ridge 2020 board position that heightened density should be regulated through the zoning code, not through the city charter. There hasn't been any official city stance or anything. That's an official Wheat Ridge 2020 stance. So we were working toward that end. And so we partnered with the city on this video and we've done some other tasks. And I just want to update you on a few of those things that we found while we've been doing this and then tell you what's going to happen next. Some business owners, property owners and residents joined the subcommittee. One of our orders of business was to learn how the amendment on building height and residential density was added to the city charter. We contacted former city councilwoman Nancy Snow, who's sitting right here, and asked her to bring any others who worked with her on the amendment to the charter to help explain the history. That was our intent, to really understand what that was. Our understanding from that conversation was that there were a group of citizens along with Nancy who did not like some of the development occurring around Wheat Ridge and would generally oppose development that didn't meet certain standards in Wheat Ridge. In 1981, someone had proposed, as Tom Slattery mentioned, a potential 100-foot building near the burned-down grocery store site at 44th and Uppam. That seemed to be the straw that broke the camel's back and the group resolved to come up with something to stop such developments without having to protest each individual possibility. Additionally, there was distrust of how staff would apply the rules regarding heightened density and the process through city council. So I think that was fair in assessing what we heard. This led, at that time in 1982, to a petitioning to a city charter amendment that was passed and then enacted in July 1983. And that is when the heightened density amendment to the city charter was done. Since that time, it is not hard to notice that development has been occurring around Wheat Ridge and surrounding communities, and Wheat Ridge has remained relatively flat. The subcommittee also learned that Wheat Ridge is the only city in Colorado to have both height and density restrictions in our city charter. The only other city that we could find that has one of those is the city of Boulder, which has a height restriction in its city charter, but nothing on density. Nationally, zoning code is the best practice for regulating heightened density. There are a handful of coastal cities that you will find in both California and Florida that do have height limitations in their charter to protect their ocean views. We were very hard-pressed to find any examples of cities that have density restrictions in their charter. So to bring you up to speed, some of you participated in this, so it's not too hard to remember. But 2008, there was yes on 2A, 2B, and 2C that were put forward by the city council at that time. 2A and 2B were tax and bonding measures. 2C was a measure to remove heightened density restrictions from the city charter. That, 2C, 2A and 2B failed, but 2C also failed by a margin of 355 votes. So it was very close. Frankly, being the first time that that had come up, that showed more understanding than we had necessarily expected as an organization. So that was the first attempt. The second attempt that was referred to in the video a couple of times was in 2009 when the city again had issues 2A, 2B, and 2C. And this time, the context was that 2A and 2B were measures to remove the heightened density restrictions only in certain urban renewal areas that were referenced, the I-70 in Wadsworth and Kipling areas. That measure, oh, and 2C was a utility measure. So there was no taxes that year. The 2A and 2B, the lowest margin of winning in those was 380 votes. So not a big swing from 355 down in 2008 and winning by 280, or 380 rather in 2009. Since then, the restrictions obviously were lifted in those areas. The committee toured the Wheat Ridge Town Center apartments, which I know most of you have been in and toured as well. We noticed that, you know, the floodgates did not open. There isn't a whole new skyline of Wheat Ridge. There has been one quality development that we can point to and it was done well and with good architectural standards and input. We've also met some others that have yet to realize their potential. The ALFigs who were featured in the video, Craig and Wade, are two of the brothers at that property who are here tonight. Their property spoke to a specific problem, which is they're not on a major corridor. They're not on Wadsworth or Kipling or I-70. They're not even on Sheridan or 32nd. They're at 33rd and Ames and they have this property that they really can't do much with. The property where the apartment was, was built before the city charter restrictions, but now that vacant lot adjacent to it is utilized for counting their density. So it's a very specific case study, but something that we think we can apply more broadly when we look at infill development throughout our community and why it's difficult to only do it in certain corridors because that, again, kills that conversation. One of the things that we've talked about with the ALFigs, they've started to look at other investment in the area, the Northwest Denver area. And when they met with some people to talk about some of their options, they said, "Well, Wheat Ridge has these limitations, so you should avoid it." And they already had property here and had found that out. But it's hard for us to quantify how many people have been told that. Stay away from Wheat Ridge, they have these restrictions. How many times people have come to city staff and said, "I would like to do something." Oh, city charter prohibits that. It's hard to quantify our lost opportunity, but I think you can guestimate it by looking at the surrounding communities. That said, where we are right now, we're very fortunate. Susan Aldretti is here from the Denver Metro Association of Realtors. She's one of our subcommittee members. And with Susan's partnership, we were able to get a grant from the National Association of Realtors to actually do some polling. Because we want to know, and I'm sure you want to know, what are residents thinking specifically about this? And so that poll will be put out to citizens in the next couple of weeks and we should have some results later in March. What we hope to do with that, and what we will do with that, is then use that to finalize some messages in talking about this issue. We will roll that out with basically an advanced academy, a workshop for different people to learn more about heightened density and how to speak about it. Because the reality is, I'm sure you don't get a ton of calls about the city charter. It's not something that people talk about all the time and it's something that we know we have to work at educating. We think that since 2009, Wheat Ridge 2020 has graduated in our history over 100 Planning Academy graduates. We have a Thriving Live Local program. We think there are people that we can reach. With that, I want to invite you to participate. There are a few things that I could really use from you and that we, as Wheat Ridge 2020, would really like your participation as elected officials. One, we want to know, what are your constituents saying? What are you hearing? We want to know, what do you wish that you had better words to describe? What are the questions that people are asking? That's really helpful for us to know as we start to finalize some of the messages for how we talk about this. We also felt that we wanted to partner with you as city council, mayor, and city staff and city elected officials because one of the things that we had heard was a distrust in the past of the process and of the people. And we want to be partners in that. We think there is a good process. We want your support as city council. We don't want to do something that you don't support. And so we want to have that discussion with you in the next few months. So with that, I will open it up for a few things and tell you that we would hope to be back here in a few months telling you where we are, what we've heard and what we've learned.
Mr. Reiner, are you raising your hand?
Are we going to hear anything from the Wheat Ridge United neighbors?
So now you've heard the discussion. Do you have anything that's time to say or do you want to hold? Okay, go ahead and make sure your mic's turned on, please.
Well, first, I went by the apartment at 29th and Ames.
33rd names. It's 33rd names.
Oh, you're right, I'm on the wrong side. I didn't see any off-street parking. I'll stand corrected if there is some. I saw no outdoor spaces for use by the tenants. And I wondered, well, why isn't that adjacent lot developed for those purposes? The other thing, if you feel that 2020, that you have such support in the city, then hit the bricks, get your petitions, go around, get it on the ballot. That's what I say.
Well, first of all, I guess I'd like to say I cringe every time somebody says they're going to educate me, but that's always what they talk about. They're going to go around, they're going to explain to people that they're really not very smart and they will explain to them how this would be good for the city, which I don't believe. And I'd like to echo again what he said about that particular piece of property. If I'm correct, that went in and under the county, I think, and there was already a 21 units per acre. And so why do people do that and not put anything? I mean, why is nothing spread out? Why didn't they use that? Every time this happens, but let me give you just one example. You all remember the high-rise on 38th Avenue, obviously. And one of the impetuses, if that's a word, or impetus, for the charter amendment was that the high-rise also went in under the county with only 21 units an acre. And then the city allowed them to use that land twice and put those additional units in. And of course, what happened then? Well, then the city, in order to give those people someplace to move around, bought a park. And I can tell you some other places in the city where people have built apartments that are really crammed in and then the city built a park. And not that I'm against the park, I think that's wonderful. But people who develop should provide some things for their own properties. It isn't that that's something that is really tight. 21 units an acre is actually quite a bit. There was a development request in Northwest Denver not very long ago. There was 16 units an acre and people were screaming bloody murder. Now, I know there's more than that in Nevada, but I don't think you'll find, if you really explain to people, quote, educated them, that they really like things that much denser. Now, let me also talk about the distrust and the public process that you put in. There was a lot of information out that when the charter was changed, just on these corridors, that then there would always be input when each individual property was developed. But that isn't what happened. Well, first of all, one thing did happen. I'll bet you will not find very many people in this city who ever envisioned that after that, somebody would create a mixed-use district that could go up to 122 feet. That's not Wheat Ridge, folks. That's a really, really tall building. The other thing that I find the most appalling is that as soon as you zone to mixed-use, you, the city council, have nothing more to say. Your staff runs this city, you don't. I know that's insulting, but I'm going to say it anyway. Because, and that came up at the meeting when I met with 2020. Somebody asked me, "Oh, well, once they get the zoning, the council can speak about the layout and that kind of thing, can't they?" No, no, they can't. The staff does that. So the public process, to my way of thinking, is a big problem. But I'd like to ask a question, too. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, but the young man who spoke up and said he'd met with lots of developers, but also specifically was talking about retail. I guess I'd like to know from somebody, where in the city, you know, now that you have this heightened density gone on almost everything that we have designated for commercial, where else has somebody complained that they couldn't put commercial? And why in the name of heaven would we want anything there anyway? Do you know? Have you had anybody come in?
I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, where, for example?
So one of the issues that we have, as we mentioned in the video, is that we are largely a built-out community in Brownfields, meaning there's already something there. And so we have some properties that would be good potential for infill development, for something new to be put in, for something to be scraped or repurposed. That could look like less than 35 feet. It could look like more. But even in less than 35 feet, as an example, 38th Avenue is an area that a lot of people approach me about. And they're interested in doing three-story mixed-use, where there'd be something retail on the first floor and then residential above. And with those density and those height restrictions, it is nearly impossible for them to figure it out for how it can pencil, meaning how it can be profitable, which in the end of the day, for something to get built, it has to be. So that would be a specific example, is along the 38th Avenue corridor. And then other examples like the ALFigs. I do want to just address the ALFig property, which does have adjacent to parking and it does have community garden plots available for their residents. But the thing that I would like to refer back to Ken is about this public process. And in the process of rezoning, there is a public process. And that is, there's neighborhood meetings. I'm going through one right now with Wheat Ridge 2020 with our Somerset apartment building. We're rezoning just so we can create townhomes rather than condos without changing the building. Like, so there's a process, even if you're not changing anything. And that will have to go to city council. The city council has seen other rezonings recently as well in the 38th Avenue. And so it does go through city council to get zoned. Do you want to say anything about the standards or how they're applied?
Let's just reiterate, Ms. Snow is certainly right that at some point, the public process ends and it becomes an administrative approval. That was a fairly strategic move by council to kind of recognize that at some point, you know, a developer needs to have minimal risk if they're going to make an investment in a community and some level of certainty at an appropriate juncture in the process. So the public process for us is really, starts with the development of a comprehensive plan with a very public process, with specific corridor plans. When you look at both Wadsworth and 38th Avenue, the vision for what the land use and density goals for those corridors is established in those planning efforts that include multiple public meetings and multiple different venues for public comment. And then next was the development of the mixed-use districts and with the discussion of where those districts might apply hypothetically in the future so that the public could have kind of a perception of, yeah, that seems like maybe the right type of design standards and densities for that type of a commercial corridor as opposed to another. Again, the distinction between the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use commercial. So several public meetings before the public hearing process, just in the development of those districts. And then in the case of 38th Avenue and Wadsworth, there were multiple public meetings with the property owners in each of those corridors. Then subsequent meetings where the public adjacent to the corridors were invited. And then there's the public hearing process to actually rezone those properties. So whether that's on a case-by-case basis or in the case of 38th and Wadsworth, public hearings for a legislative initiative, the city council initiated rezoning of those corridors. So ending with the formal public hearings, but much, much before that in terms of engaging the public. At that point, once the properties are zoned, at least under the mixed-use zoning districts that we have on the books right now, with the exception of some larger sites where there's a neighborhood meeting and approval of a concept plan, which is administrative, by and large, the approvals are administrative. It's called the Administrative Site Plan Review. That's the reason why the mixed-use zoning districts are so detailed in nature, so specific in terms of the level of architectural requirements, the specificity of the site planning requirements, so that the public, so that council, has a fairly good understanding of what they're going to get in exchange for those design documents. So when council approves a rezoning to mixed-use commercial, mixed-use neighborhood, or mixed-use TOD, they can look very specifically at that, you know, 50-page document and say, you know, those standards are sufficient security to me that I'm going to get the product that the community expects and that I expect. And that's why we have administrative approvals. The administrative approvals, again, we think is really critical if we're going to attract investment into the community.
So Britta has indicated that they're looking at starting a survey process and to come back to city council in a few months here. Does council have any questions or comments before we move on to the next item or staff? Mr. Starker?
Mr. Johnstone?
Mr. Johnston, I'll address this to you, and I'm not sure who should really answer it, but if we were to remove the height and density restrictions from the charter, would every zone district have a height and a density restriction embodied in the zone district itself?
Yes.
And do they vary significantly from the, well, I guess they don't go over what the charter would allow, but are... Talk a little bit about what zone districts have, what heights and what densities.
So, with the existing zone districts, which is by and large the majority of the city, so whether it be an R1 or an R2 for residential neighborhoods, those all comply with the charter, which is a 35-foot maximum for residential structures. In commercial districts like C1, C2, industrial, there's a 50-foot height maximum, and that would not change unless some change were made to the code, you know, very consciously through that process to amend those districts. The current mixed-use districts are the only areas where there is some variance from those more, those limitations in the charter. So the 50 feet for mixed-use and commercial, and 35 feet for residential. In mixed-use commercial, you can go up to four to six stories, so there's no specific height maximum in those other than those story limits, which people seem to relate to more. And then in the mixed-use commercial TOD, it's the six to eight stories. In mixed-use neighborhood, which is what applies on 38th Avenue, we have, that is compliant with the charter. So 35 feet for residential, 50 feet for commercial or mixed-use.
And tell me, why do we go from feet to stories? Is a story defined in the code?
Well, in part because we don't wanna be too prescriptive in terms of design and architect, architecture. Depending on the uses in the building, the amount of clear height that you need between stories varies a lot. So, if you wanna have a quality retail development, you may wanna have 16 or 18 feet of space to create the volume that you think is gonna be attractive to retailers or restaurateurs to create the interior that they want. If you had office above that, you know, they may want 10 to 12 feet, depending on the type of office users. There's more mechanical requirements in office in retail, more separation requirements to handle those mechanical systems. And then above that, you know, residential can be anywhere from, maybe say, eight to 10 feet or more, you know, depending on the quality of the space. So it's hard to pick the right number, and the minute you pick the right number that you think, you pick the wrong one, right? So, we felt we needed to be more flexible, and people relate a lot more to, you know, what... You know, I think you'd be challenged to go out on the street and say, well, show me a 35-foot building, or a building that you like, and tell me how tall it is. But I think you can go out to the public and you say, you know, and this is what we do in our planning processes. I think, you know, two to three stories feels right on this street. I think four to six stories feels right on this street. And I can look at a four and six-story building and tell you, I think that's the appropriate type of development.
Anybody, anybody else wanna say anything before we move on? I'll just then, one quick comment, not too much. I, you ask us what we hear from the community, and I hear two very, very divergent things. I hear a group of people that are very committed to the ideas that they saw the city found on and think are worth reinforcing and defending at all costs. And I see a group of new people that believe that change is necessary and inevitable, and there's a direction that change ought to go. And this council, I think, is gonna be forced to take a look at which, or if there's a boundary between those two things, we want to look at. For myself, I think that I, leaving aside that philosophical discussion, I do find that the current situation is bad civics from my perspective, and not the typical way to govern land use issues broadly. But as Wanda sang, it was used to remind me, just because they don't do it that way anywhere else doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it that way in Wheat Ridge. So, I'd like to leave the resolution of that problem as open as the others. So, that's all I had, and if there's no other comments on this issue, did you wanna move on to the next? Always.
The fact that most cities don't govern height and density that way is meaningless because that's what home rule cities are for, for the people to determine what kind of city they're going to have and not have to follow whatever whim or fad or fancy comes down the pike. So, I'm getting tired of hearing about this. Nobody else does it this way.
Well, I'm sorry that you don't wanna hear the other side of the discussion. It's unfortunate.
Well, I've heard it many times.
Mr. Demont?
With regard to what we hear, you know, I had the, when I ran for council in 2009, the two ballot questions were also on there, and I could not knock on a door without hearing about it. And, you know, in my district, of course, I'm not anywhere near 38th, and it, you know, it is different. The districts do differ, you know, quite a bit. And in my district, it was not, not good. I mean, I don't know if we could've broken it down on how they voted, but I can tell you that, you know, as I, those six months before the election were incredibly negative on the doors I knocked. So, I mean, I don't know how it's changed. I know it, you know, the demographic hasn't changed in our district. And, you know, I hope that some of those people in District Four, if they're still feeling that way, that they get involved, maybe get in touch with 2020 and ask to be part of the survey and part of the planning, and let their voices be heard, too. I know sometimes we get in our, you know, we get around here and we get sort of in a little box, and you don't get out too much. So, sometimes it's nice if you get some people from, even though if you're not on 38th, get involved and come and see what it's all about, give 2020 a call, and get involved in the survey and get another perspective.
Thanks. I just wanted to say, if you would like to meet with the Alfigs to understand anything about their property, they're open to that, and then I will be sending you an email invitation as we set dates for things. Thanks.
Britta, did you still wanna do an update, or just a quick summary?
Oh, yeah.
The second gen item on the Wheat Ridge 2020 update is an update on the, this year's implementation plan for 38th Avenue. As you know, we've contracted with Wheat Ridge 2020 to help us with this project, and they, we budgeted a certain amount of money this year, and Britta wants to update you on what those plans are and how they plan to draw down those funds.
Yeah, our proposal was in your packet, so I think it's pretty straightforward. We're very excited. The leadership committee continues to grow. We've got a new wave of new businesses that are involved. The major things that are going to happen this year, banner and lights program. Patrick and I are gonna stay in close communication to see if we can get to some new Excel polls. But we originally had budgeted for that Sheridan to Harlan area, plus the overhead banner polls that will be going in, doing some event-specific banners for that. And then as our budget allows, maybe adding some lighting elements. The overhead banner polls will hopefully be able to have lighting features, so maybe we can change some things out and add some visual interest. We're really excited about the website and social media. Our marketing committee has been working really diligently, and we've got some exciting things that will be happening in the next few months. We need to continue to do some marketing campaign and working with the businesses along 38th on how to drive business to the corridor as a whole. One of the things the city was particularly interested in is really a feasibility study, understanding what is the capacity of the properties there, and at looking at a special district. And so that is one of the things that is in our contract. And then the final thing is ongoing implementation to continue working with the leadership committee, continuing to do outreach and staffing for those subcommittees. So, with that, the total project cost is $100,000 and was in, already budgeted in your approved budget for 2013. And so what we're asking for now is for you to agree with this proposal so that we can draw down those funds as we meet our deliverables.
Does anyone have a consensus to support or not support the current 2020 program?
Could I ask a question?
Sure. I'm sorry.
Two things. The banner and light program, that is for management, because it seems to me we had separate funds for that.
The city has budgeted for the banner polls, the large ones for the overhead banners, and we're under, we're moving forward on that.
And that's separate?
Yeah, that's separate from this, correct.
This is for specific banners to also exchange with the branded banners that the city will get. So, like, event-specific and things like that.
Okay, gotcha. And then under special district feasibility study, are we talking here about a business improvement district? Is that what you're looking at?
That is one of the 152 special districts allowed in the state of Colorado. So, we're not precluding that it would be any certain type of special district at this time. It's really, it would really be to see what the capacity is, and that would help us in working with the property owners to see what kind of special district sounds feasible and appropriate for what they wanna get done.
Okay. I just, I just think I needed more explanation about...
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Stites?
Just real quick. Patrick, have we heard anything from Excel on those polls?
We continue to have weekly, or every other week, conference calls with them. They are now evaluating the city's polls between Wadsworth and Harlan to see if they are structurally significant, or structurally sound to put banners on. So, we're hoping to have a resolution before the summer period.
I saw a guy out there last week with it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a slow, long process, but we're getting closer, I believe.
And then the next deal would be to, 'cause all those polls, Harlan West, all have sockets on them, and it would be nice to get those hooked up. But I asked them one time, and they said, well, there's no way to meter the electricity people would use, and I go, oh...
I think there's some options for that, and we're looking into that with them, too, 'cause, yeah, we would like to build a...
'Cause they're all on there. I just don't think they were ever hooked up or whatever.
Exactly.
Thank you. Others? Does anyone want to make a consensus as to whether or give 2020 direction to move forward?
I give, I move that consensus to move 2020 forward.
Is there any objection to the consensus proposed by Ms. Jay that 2020 move forward? That being said, I think you have your direction from council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Britta.
Amendment 64 marijuana.
Should be very short.
You know, my short-term memory's not that good anymore anyhow, so...
Just think about the, you know, the Doors and Riders on the Storm. There's a long version and a short version. It's the short version of that. Counsel, I'm joined by the police chief, who may have a couple of comments on this as well. But you have the memo in the packet, and let me just make a few points about it. As you know, we have Amendment 64. It's passed, so that permits use of one ounce or less of marijuana by persons 21 years of age or older. And as you'll recall, we made some changes to the Code of Laws on the criminal side to make clear that that age, that age limit now applies. And we changed the code to allow the purchase and possession of marijuana paraphernalia to enable people to inhale or ingest their legally acquired and held one ounce of marijuana. That's sort of the easy part. That leaves us with a couple of categories. Retail marijuana sales, which are, as you know, contemplated and permitted by Amendment 64. Marijuana clubs, where consenting adults that are 21 years of age or more, and we each bring our one ounce to a public location, or, you know, we all rent, you know, Joey's restaurant, and we all go there. And he's not selling marijuana to us, but he's making the place available. And that's now happening in some jurisdictions around the state, and the question is, you know, what to do about that. A couple of points. The state is involved right now. You may have heard and been watching the efforts of the governor's appointed task force, which was tasked with putting together what that state regulatory system ought to be. Is it gonna be like liquor? Is it gonna be something else? And they've, I think, done a pretty good job of working through a whole ton of pretty tricky issues, among others, well, what kind of levels, and how do you do labeling? And, you know, there's more to it, when you think about it, than there is at first blush. Anyhow, they've completed their report and handed it over to the General Assembly, and General Assembly will now take it up and make sausage out of it, I guess. But I'm sure that we'll see action by the General Assembly in this legislative session. However, that's, even if the state acts, I'm certain that they will, to deal with licensing and sales, per se, that still leaves a role for local governments on the zoning side. How many of those establishments, where may they be permitted? And how close to each other, the same kind of zoning overlay that we have now with things like liquor stores, for example. It's a classic kind of zoning approach. And so that's a decision that we'll need at some point to make. Federal law hasn't changed. It's still illegal under federal law, but I haven't seen the feds yet make a real effort to enforce. And there are some bills moving around Congress to exempt from the federal statute those states, or at least activities under state law which are permitted. Hasn't happened yet, but I know there are bills being proposed. Lastly, that brings me, I mentioned the private marijuana clubs. What you have attached to this memo is not only the state statute, but a form of moratorium ordinance. I earlier told council, look, on the retail side, you don't need to do anything till summer because no one can get a license to sell retail marijuana until the state starts, until the state puts its system in place, which won't be until summer, early fall. And that's still true. Nevertheless, marijuana clubs, private clubs, don't rely on retail sale and could conceivably be, you know, if you've gotta get a business license, and it's in a commercial district, you can conceivably do that. Now, the chief mentioned to me just a little while ago, and I recall hearing on the state task force's report that they were gonna take the position that private clubs were not permitted, and that should not, should not be permitted. And if that's the case, that takes that issue away. But of course, we don't have a statute on it yet. And until we do, it's people's interpretation of that, of Amendment 64, which I think is, it's reasonable to interpret it presently as allowing for private clubs. In a minute, I'll get to what I think your options are in terms of giving direction to the staff. Let's see. The, the choices that I've laid out are on the, gee, I guess the sort of second page of my longer memo. There's always no action. On the retail side, probably fine until summer, fall. Moratorium on sales in marijuana clubs. Develop local regulations on zoning right away. Address private clubs in some way. And I've shown you the various choices. Or simply prohibition, which you have the right to do. Notwithstanding whatever the electorate said, you've got the right to enact an ordinance simply prohibiting marijuana sales, if you wish, in the community. You can take that to election, too. So those are, that's a series of choices. What I did develop was a moratorium ordinance on retail sales and on marijuana clubs. And Ken Johnston pointed out to me earlier today that that should, if you're gonna go that direction, that should probably include grow operations as well because Amendment 64 contemplates that you'll be able to grow for sale. And clearly, you can grow for yourself, and you can't prohibit that, but growing for sale isn't that well taken care of in that proposed ordinance. At this point, I think I'm gonna let you ask questions, and we can work our way through what your questions are. At this point, I think I'm going to let you ask questions, and we can work our way through what, what your questions are. At, at some point, it's either act and, and have a moratorium, take the position that, you know, we're fine with this, let the state develop its, its regulations, and then we'll, we'll develop ours on the zoning side and embrace, or at least allow, retail marijuana sales. Those are sort of the two big choices, I think. One kind of on the side is what about marijuana clubs? And, and that, frankly, is kind of a new development, it hadn't occurred, I don't think, to anyone. When they were drafting amendment 64, they only started to pop up just to, uh, within the last few months. Questions?
Ms. Langworthy?
Just a quick question, because we have, we have zoning limitations currently for legal, or for medicinal marijuana. If we do another zoning limitation, would it impact, I mean, we can't impact medicinal, but I mean, if we say that the, I guess my, I'm trying to figure out, if you, you say you want to limit recreational marijuana in the same manner as medicinal, does that limit the number, I mean, can we expand the places we currently allow? Or will they, they have to fight for the places we have open?
You could look at it differently. The medical marijuana number and spacing rules that we put together is the, the classic, you know, kind of number and spacing routine that you can get into for any use, really, you, you see it in adult business use all the time. Number and, and spacing, et cetera, and distance from schools and whatnot. Really, a form of that also applies to liquor stores, you know, from distance from schools, et cetera, and from each other. So, you could have a similar system for retail. What I, uh, other people have come up with other names, but I've come up with retail and medicinal. Who knows what name will end up getting, to be the most popular, but I'm, retail helps me remember that that's the sales side. And you could have the same locations, or you could have more. I don't think we have many, based upon the zoning limitations we have in place. But, but for retail, it could be, it could, you could allow them in more locations or fewer than, than we have for, for medical marijuana, and that's a pure zoning kind of decision, just as you would have that same decision for adult businesses or liquor stores, et cetera.
Could they have to, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, because I remember all this that we went through with the medicinal marijuana. If we do an overlay where we're saying essentially the same, say the same rules apply to either medicinal or retail.
Same zoning spacing.
The same specific.
Okay.
Rules. Does that then limit, so say there's maybe five places in Wheat Ridge that you can have medicinal, does, um, and we overlay these retail, is that, that's still the same five places, they just get shared between medicinal and retail?
Yeah, I mean, once you.
You could write it either way, couldn't you?
Yeah, you, you could, I suppose you could, you could say that there, that, that, the, uh, the two operations could be adjacent, or could be, I suppose, in the same building. Or you could say, once a site's taken, it's taken, whether it's for medical marijuana or retail. I think you could do any of those choices.
And does medical, uh, medical marijuana have a more preemptive, I mean, do they have more prior, priority over retail, or is it equal at this point?
Not really, no.
It's equal, okay.
You know.
I just don't know enough about the retail parts, I wanted to make sure.
You know, frankly, you have the ability by ordinance to prohibit all medical and all retail. So, that to me says that, that if you've got the right to prohibit, then you've got the right to limit the locations in pretty much any way you, you choose.
Ms. Jay.
I guess I need my own clarification. Uh, when I'm looking at Appendix B, which is the, the municipal actions and elections, I think it's about the second page of amendment attachment four. When I look down here on Monument, Colorado.
Alright, mm-hmm, yeah.
That, if that's, when I'm thinking correctly, that it's sort of encapsulated what this is all about, is that we have the opportunity to either one of those choices, either direction, as they have done, prohibit marijuana cultivation, growing, uh, ordinance comply with age and possession provisions. In other words, somebody could come here and partake in marijuana.
And we've done that, that was the change we made just a couple of weeks ago, that ordinance basically checked that box.
And as well as yea or nay on prohibiting the use of marijuana in private clubs, et cetera.
Right.
So, i- is it that we do have to make these decisions?
Eventually, eventually you do. Uh, as I mentioned, I think that on the retail sale side, you know, your range of choices goes all the way from kind of embrace it and engage in kind of a zoning and licensing procedure that, that, you know, mirrors whatever the state's doing and, and allows it to take place as a regular kind of commercial activity. Really restrict the locations, kind of middle ground, like you've done for medical. Or say, by ordinance, we're just going to say there's no retail sale in, in Wheat Ridge, period. You have that range of choices for both, both medical marijuana and retail. That, those choices on retail aren't forced on you until summer, late fall, because the state has to act first. No, nobody can sell retail marijuana in Wheat Ridge or anywhere in the state until, today, until the state gets its act together. Your choices, I think, are a little more forced to take place sooner on marijuana clubs, because that's not a retail sale, and there are people doing that. You've probably seen some, some, some TV, some print descriptions. Uh, one of the other cities I represent just got a business license application in for somebody that wants to do exactly that. They don't have a moratorium, any other regulation. From their perspective, it, it probably, under the zoning code, is a general re, is just a general, uh, so, social club use, which is allowed in their commercial districts. So, they're going to have to issue a business license. And, and fine, you know, if, uh, if that's alright. That tells me, though, that if you have concern about that, you don't have to prohibit it right away, but you could certainly put a moratorium on those while you're thinking about whether you really want to prohibit it or not. Or frankly, it may well be, you put on a moratorium, and it's overtaken by events because the state legislature says, you know, that wasn't conceived of in amendment 64. We don't think that social clubs are even permitted. Now, I, I, I'll be interested to see what their rationale for that is, because if you're permitted as an adult to possess your less than one ounce, and all of us here are above 21, so we're all allowed to have our one ounce, what exactly about amendment 64 prohibits us from getting together to, to do that jointly? The only thing I can think of is, is that amendment 64 does say that it can't be consumed openly or publicly. So, conceivably, you could say, yes, you're each exercising a private right, but when you all get together, that's an open and public act, even if it is at, uh, a, a retail establishment where you've, you've, you know, had permission to, to be there. It's still, you know, about as open and public as you are at the mall. And even though that's private property, we all understand that that's a, that's public space, and you can be arrested for public drunkenness, for example, at a mall, even though it's on private property, you don't have to be out on the street. I'm, I'm guessing that's their theory. I'm not pushing a moratorium necessarily, but, but what it does allow you to do is to not have that situation out there that might have to get unwound, um, later.
Jerry's not pushing a moratorium, but it is staff's recommendation that, um, for those reasons, that we look at a moratorium, unless you know you, you want to totally prohibit it, which you could do today. But, um, Arvada, most of your neighbors are, have, have done, or are going to do a moratorium. Westy has already, Westminster has already, um, opted out to, to prohibit it totally, so. But if you want to regulate it in some format and allow it in certain areas of the city, you probably should wait until the state, um, finalizes their rules.
On the retail side.
On the retail side, yeah.
So, if, the, and that was only for the clubs, or that was, that last explanation was for?
Was for the clubs.
Was for the clubs, so.
Because that's a live issue now.
Right. We have, so the, would you like that, that one first, then?
Sure, sure.
Is there, would? Well, I was going to try and focus the discussion, was all. Back to, towards a decision, that's all. I mean, we're not done discussing on any of it, but I thought if that's a standalone question, perhaps we could focus on it, was my suggestion.
Moratorium to address the whole issue.
Yeah. If I can, before we.
Sure, go ahead, sorry.
Bud had his hand up first earlier, you want to go ahead?
I didn't miss it, I'm sorry.
I, I want to know how we currently regulate clubs. The garden club, or the golf club, or those types of clubs, do we regulate those now?
What zone districts?
You know, I'd have to look at the zoning code to tell you what zone districts. We certainly allow them in certain zone districts. And maybe just to elaborate on, on that, and, and piggyback on, on Jerry's comments. Uh, from a zoning perspective right now, uh, we've made the determination that retail sale of marijuana, uh, we're pretty specific in our zoning code about retail sales. We, we, we dive down pretty deep in terms of different types of retail sales, and allow those specifically, or don't allow them specifically in various commercial zoning districts. Uh, because of that, we've fallen back on the, um, the, the language in the zoning code that says, if, if a use is not expressly permitted, uh, it's expressly not permitted. So, the interpretation that we've made thus far is that the retail sale of recreational marijuana is not permitted. Now, that, and, and that kind of covers us potentially beyond the July deadline for the state to drop, uh, the Division of Revenue to adopt their rules to, to license them, but not fully. Uh, hence, the moratorium might be advisable. Uh, in regards to the clubs, um, I think we're on a little weaker footing, um, for the reasons Jerry has explained. And additionally, we've previously taken the opinion that hookah bars, uh, for the sake of comparison, are permitted uses under our existing zoning regulations. So that kind of sets us up a little bit for exposure there, uh, as to, you know, someone making that, that argument that, you know, how are we very different from that type of an ar, establishment as well? So, in addition to allowing clubs, as one permitted to use, private clubs, we also allow hookah bars as permissible activity in certain retail districts, so we do have some exposure there.
I guess I had a follow-up, can you give me a definition of a club? What, how do you, how do we define that?
Well, the operations that I've seen elsewhere, uh, involve of people paying a membership fee to be able to come to a location and engage in otherwise legal activities. In fact, that's how this one example, I was saying to my other client, that's exactly what the business license said. Business license application, you know, what, what business is it? Private, it's a private club, we're going to charge a membership fee, uh, and permit people to, to, to take those actions that they're allowed to take as individual adults under amendment 64.
So it would take a location and a fee?
It would look, take a location and a fee.
At a minimum.
And would have to fit within, it'd have to be allowed in our zoning district, and that's really the heartier question. And Ken's kind of addressed that, in terms of the, if, if we allow clubs or hookah bars in three-zone districts, I think we'd be hard-pressed to say no to a business license application, because they've also got to get that, a business license, for, in the city, whether or not you're selling retail, it's a business. Uh, but we'd hard-press this, be hard-pressed, I think, to say no on that basis. I don't want to get too long-winded, and I think that, you know, when we wrote our ordinance, we took a good amount of time to write it, and we wrote an incredibly smart ordinance. We put distances from schools, distances from each other, um, we took into account the zoning, and I know it took a long time, but it ended up a, a really good ordinance. Um, I think it would carry over really, really well to the retail side. Um, the state is sort of looking at it that way, where, uh, medical dispensaries now can apply for a retail side. They can't do that till October of this year. And I think the moratorium as written right here is, is perfect for the time being. We can, you know, this gives us enough time, I think it says November 1st?
Yes.
Is there a reason we picked November 1st, or is that just? Uh, it's well after the October 1, kind of state, if the state fails by October 1, we're in the game. So I thought, okay, slide it out a little more. Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's, that's a good idea. I was, you know, as I was reading it, and I realized it was nothing about grow sites in their kitchens, mips, whatever you want to call them. I mean, I figured that was intentionally left out, because I think it's a good idea to, uh, you know, continue, if we continue to allow them, um, with our dispensaries that we have, the alternative of that is, if you don't allow them, you encourage home-growing operations, which in turn creates, uh, uh, safety issues for black market, obviously. Home invasions, where people want to come in and steal the plants, fires, which I think the, uh, the club scenario also does, creates huge black market. Fire hazards, safety issues, liability issues. I mean, I can't imagine calling a, in my insurance agent, saying, hey, I'd like to get insurance on my marijuana club, and there would be a dial tone on the other side, I'm sure, which could leave, uh, you know, a landlord, or, or, you know, who knows, liable if somebody leaves there, and, you know, having a liquor license, you take huge liability, huge. So, but I think the, the moratorium as it is, is, is right on the money. I would like to see the grows left out, because I don't see, um, huge harm in that. There could be, you know, most of the, uh, you know, the real larger retail, not retail, the medical places now, the way the state sees it, they see about a 30% uptick in their sales when it takes over in, on January 1st. And, uh, if you don't allow them to grow more, then, uh, again, you create a, a black market, you know? So, um, the retail, um, right now, the way they're set up as a medical center right now can apply October 1st to be a retail center also. They can divide those into medical and retail. The difference to their customers is going to be a 15% excise tax. So if you continue to keep your medical card, you won't pay that 15 cent, 15% excise tax. For now, the state can always change that, you know, and legislature can change that before July. So, I mean, I, and I think that our, our ordinance could, could absorb that retail really well. But I like, you know, as, as right now, I like this moratorium the way it's written, and, uh, and, uh, I think we should, uh, you know, include tonight, if we want to, uh, put them, uh, if we want to prohibit clubs altogether, which, I mean, they're not to mention a terrible fiscal idea, I don't think, I can't see anybody making any money doing it, but whatever. I just, I'm, I'm concerned about the safety issues that happen, that could possibly happen there, so. Well, a moratorium would certainly buy you the time to choose to prohibit them, or to learn that as a result of the state statute, and again, I don't know much more than just that little word I heard on the news and quick conversation with Dan, whether the state will end up saying, you know, clubs just aren't permitted at all. I, I still kind of wonder, you know, I'd like to see their theory for that, I'd describe what I thought it might be. But a moratorium buys you the time to see how that plays out.
Jerry, can you explain, I don't know if you discussed that, if, if you decide to move forward with a, an emergency moratorium, it'd only last for 90 days, and we'd have to bring it back and to do a, so Jerry can speak to that, too.
Yeah, our charter provides that emergency ordinances only last for 90 days, and can't thereafter be enacted again as an emergency, to prevent the, the council from doing an emergency for 89 days, another one, you know? So you have a, a couple of choices, probably three choices, I guess. One, adopt, adopt it as an emergency, and then sometime within the 90 days, adopt a regular ordinance that would go through two readings to, to then get it actually out to November. I put down November 1, and then realized that emergency ordinance never wanted, it's, you know, it's too, it's, goes too far. That's one choice. Adopt the emergency ordinance, but then you've only got 90 days of protection, and, and it'll probably take longer for the state to be finished. Or adopt a, or not adopt it as an emergency, just go through two regular readings, with it being effective probably on adoption at second reading. And of course, the small risk is that during the time between first reading and second reading, somebody says, well, by gosh, I'm going to, I'm going to open a club. And, you know, they, they go in, they say, is it allowed by the zoning? Ken's kind of, you know, compelled to say yes, they get a building business permit. Obviously, the safest course, if you're interested in, in really controlling the game, is an emergency ordinance that's a 90-day ordinance, and then, within that timeframe, a regular ordinance extending the, the, the moratorium imposed by this ordinance for an additional X months until November 1. And that's easy to do. Just have one question about an emergency ordinance, is there a, do you have to have a certain amount of council members present to pass, or is it just still five? Uh, yes, it's, uh, six, I think. It's six, pretty sure it's six. Can I borrow your code?
Can I borrow your code?
No, but we'd have to put this on a regular meeting.
Right.
So we can't do it next week.
Right?
You're pretty first in this stuff, Joey.
Wow, that's good, that's correct.
Is there a reason, Joey?
No, that's, that's what I said last night. I don't know how, when I ever wanted to learn this stuff, but.
Ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead. Tracy?
I just have a quick question. How many medicinal?
Back to one conversation, please.
It's just, I just, how many medicinal marijuana places do we have currently? Four. And where are they located? Because I mean, they must, I mean, they must fit within our, the zoning that we had done. I'm just, I knew where two of them were, but now I don't know where the extras are.
Um, there's one at four thousand eight hundred Lamar, there's one at Van Gordon and Fifty, I want to say. There's a new one, um, west of Kipling on Forty-Ninth, and there's one on Forty-Fourth. And we received on Friday a business license application for one at Twenty-Seventh and Kipling. So that would be the fifth.
And, and they all fit within that zoning range, so there's no over, okay.
Right, yeah, the, the limiting factor right now is a three-quarter mile distance from each other. And if this fifth one gets approved, we probably will have very limited to zero eligible locations left.
And are any of them the ones that were grandfathered in when we had first made that? Okay, so those ones have closed?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, that's, I'm just curious, because remember we had like three at the time that we made that, and they were grandfathered in, and so they have since closed their doors, and now we have four new ones, and then, okay.
Thank you, any more, Mr.?
I can answer Joey's question. It's an emergency ordinance, majority vote of a quorum, so you don't have that limit.
Okay, thank you. Any?
The chief had something to.
And I just wanted to clarify, and, and Ken can, can correct me if I'm wrong in this, but we do not allow grow operations or the, the food infusion operations in our medicinal marijuana. We only allow the, you know, the sale. And there, there may be some grows that are allowed on-site, but I think it was limited to, to plants, but help me with that, Ken.
Uh, we, we do allow infused products. It's a separate class, but it's allowed in the same zoning districts. And then we, we have what's called an optional premises grow operation. So if you're going to grow, it has to be from another approved retail location.
Or medicinal.
For medicinal, right, so you can't have a standalone grow operation.
In the city.
In the city, correct.
Thank you. Further, Mr. Bud?
I almost forgot. The distance from schools.
We're not open for public comment at this. No, not, not, not at this point. At the beginning of the study session, we have an open session. We had, at the beginning of the study session, we're open to public comment at that point in time.
The distance from schools, that would overlap to other cities, right?
That's been the opinion that we've taken, yes.
It's not just like within the city, okay. So if there's a school in Lakewood, Arvada right there, okay.
Same with the separation requirement. We, the separation for the one at Twenty-Seventh and Kipling is actually a separation from a facility that's in Lakewood. Is that correct?
It is far enough? Far?
Just far enough, yeah.
It's pretty close.
And, and those separation requirements are a thousand feet from schools, a thousand feet from residential childcare facilities, and a thousand feet from drug and alcohol treatment centers. That's, that's what's in the medical marijuana ordinance. And then three-quarters of a mile from other medical marijuana centers.
So it sounds like we can put in an emergency ordinance.
Yep, that, that keeps you, that keeps it frozen for as long as you need to have it frozen until the state acts. You see how the law kind of evolves on this whole club thing? And whether and to what extent you might need regulations, whether they're a good idea, bad idea? I'm sure we'll have some, I won't call them horror stories, but I'm sure there's going to be some stories in the news that describe clubs, you know, as they be, as they're allowed and become popular. And you kind of sit back and watch without worrying about what's going to, what business license application is going to come in the door. Is that a consensus to move forward with the?
That's, but I would like to make sure that we add the, the social club aspect of it.
It's in there.
It is in there, okay, just make sure it is, because I don't want that to come back and bite us.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's been an unwelcome surprise to some jurisdictions that frankly didn't see, you know, that coming.
So, so we now have a, do we have a consensus, any objective consensus to, to move forward with the emergency ordinance for Mr. Doll's formulation?
As written.
As written.
Yep, week from tonight, you'll see it on the.
Whatever, is that, let me, um, does that, I was unclear, there were a couple of, does that, does that solve all immediate problems then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Puts them on hold, yeah. Puts you in control.
All right. Open Meetings Law, Law, Mr. Doll. Are there, are there other staff reports?
No.
It is Mr. Doll this evening.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make this short and we'll be able to get out pretty early.
You want to wait a second till we?
Okay.
Have this side conversation gone?
You know, they were.
Okay, we are back to Mr. Doll on, I guess we're not back to Mr. Doll today.
Let me, let me make this short and sweet. I occasionally, this is triggered by nothing in particular, but I, I kind of, on an irregular basis, like to take the opportunity to remind the council about some key aspects of the Open Meetings Law and while I'm out at the Open Records Act, primarily around email. And this is my kind of annual opportunity to remind you to avoid the reply to all function. Because let's remember, the Open Meetings Act says that a meeting is a meeting of a quorum of you. Three or a quorum, whichever is fewer, says the statute. Either in person or electronically, and of course, that includes, that includes email. And the, it's, I, I get it that there are, occasionally, it's absolutely appropriate to have a kind of a one-way communication. Sometimes you'll get information from staff, and that's one way, and it goes to all of you, and you're all listed. But when you do a reply to all and start processing a decision in one way or another, then you're really conducting a meeting electronically. And that meeting, under the Open Records Act, or Meetings Law, is declared to be open. But the ability of the public to attend that meeting is, is basically nil. Because there's just no way for the public to attend that meeting. I will say that council's actually pretty good about not deliberating with the reply to all function. But the minute you start the reply to all function, then there's a reply to that reply, and a reply to that reply, and, and at some point, you've, you've done some deliberating that then forms the basis for what you do up on the dais. I've not seen this happening in any significant way, I will tell you, I'm perfectly fine with that. But it's important for me to kind of keep that, that concept green because once that does occur and then it's referred to on the dais, well, you know, based upon all the emails, here's how I think we feel about this. You know, then clearly, the meeting started before, you know, before seven PM on that one. And that's, you know, not right, and it's not permitted by, by the, by the law. Besides which, the council rules of order say all meetings shall be open to members of the public and the press. And again, the, the meeting conducted by email just can't even comply, not only with the Open Records, Open Meetings Law, but also with your own council rules. And I appreciate your continued good behavior and just encourage you to continue that behavior. If you've got a question, you're always welcome to email just the staff or just email me. I'm not sure what we're doing here, can you find out? That's what staff's for. And I get it that the other way to do it is to email everybody and say, anybody on the council know about this? But that triggers this meeting requirement. And so you can get the same information, you're just going to have to get it on a more of a one-to-one. And I would encourage you to do that. The, the Open Records Act aspect is just another reminder that in the early days of email, people would think, well, the emails that I do on my, my own computer, that's, those aren't really open records, it's just the emails on a city computer. And that was a real debate at the very beginning of email when people had city computers that were just for city email, and everybody kept things kind of separate. When they really were still clinging to the idea that when you go to the office, you're doing work, and when you're at home, you're only at home. And guess what's happened in the last ten years? The, the dividing line between the office and home has been completely erased. And our PCs have everything on them. They just do, and it's dumb to, you're not going to have two computers sitting at home, you just aren't. And so that distinction's been erased. And accordingly, the concept of your, of emails that you generate or receive on behalf of public business are open records. There are some exceptions, correspondence between you and a constituent, the nature of which the constituent expects that it'll be confidential. You know, you get an email from a constituent saying, I'm really, you know, upset about this issue or about my neighbor. I really don't want to use my, you know, you to use my name. That's an email that the Open Records Act says is not open. But that's pretty limited. Most of the kind of correspondence that we all engage in is part of the public business and can be accessed. And, and I, I only say that to remind you that as you're writing it, just, you know, think about if I read this in the paper, that'd still be all right with me. And those are the only two points I wanted to make, and I appreciate your, your indulgence, and I'll make them again in a year or so, and, you know.
I, elected, elected officials matters, anybody? I have one very short one. If, Mr. You've got your hands up, Mr. Starker.
Got my hand up. Uh, Mr. Doll, it was mentioned tonight that we go, something about the annual retreat that we went, that we do on an annual basis, which if we have a date for this year, I haven't been informed. Okay, is that, is that a public meeting? Was that noticed? Was that open to the public? And, and were we in good shape on that?
Yeah, we're in good shape. Those, those are public meetings because you have a quorum of, you know, a quorum, and you're discussing public business. They're not an executive session, I'm not there convening something like that. Most cities have them at some level in some way. Very often, they'll have them in another location, and that's no violation. It's common for cities to go have them in Vail, or go have them in a, and, and the, the idea being, and Wheat Ridge never does that, they'll have, I think once we had in Arvada. We went that far away, you know, as to Arvada. But yes, they're, they're noticed as open meetings, the public can show up. Typically, they don't. It's a pretty long, boring day, frankly, if, unless you're a government groupie like us.
Mr. Doll, that was not a.
Unless you're a government groupie like we are. But yeah, we, we follow the law, and allegations to the contrary are not true. We follow the law around our, our, those sessions. Yep.
I was thinking that we were talking about not having one this year. Was that discussion, I mean, I'm not particularly for that, but as far as we know, we're going ahead with our planning.
Yeah, I don't recall that being the discussion. Mr. Reinhardt and I have been discussing it briefly, we haven't set a date.
Okay.
But kind of trying to figure out, I think one question I think we had is, Mr. Reinhardt had, is if we should invite the public to maybe a community forum-type event, like we did that one year with, with Mr. Summick, I don't know if you remember that. We had the roundtables, so that's something we're kind of batting around, but.
I, I thought it might be time to do that one again, if people are interested, we can look for a scheduled date for it.
And it could be associated with the council treat or not, or kind of dovetail into it to get some feedback from them before you go into a retreat or after.
Other comments, any elected officials matters? Okay, I have one real short one. We heard from the Colorado Municipal League today that there's pending legislation they'd like us to contact our senator about. And I've always wanted to get buy-off in here before I, I do that. In this particular case, there's a Senate Bill one sixty-two. They would like us to oppose the amendment. It's really basically telling us how to run our inspection services within the city. And we, we just, I don't know how much, how much in this you want to go, basically, it's a home rule. Charter would, we believe it's a, the municipal league believes that the state is taking it, telling us that we have to use certain unionized employees to do certain things and, and how our inspections are performed, which we would argue are not state, it's not the state's business to, to move forward. And I would like your permission to call Sherri John to say, don't follow through, you know, object to this. Boy, that was a lousy explanation. Did you guys get enough?
Basically, it's going to require, yeah, require the city to use journeymen plumbers as inspectors for plumbing issues.
How do you feel about that, Bud?
I think this is a home rule issue. The city is, the city should be, is qualified to.
But you know, I, I always have been very cautious, and I don't know if you want me to be with the, got the Colorado Municipal League thing. I didn't think you wanted me out there just taking an opinion on whatever suited me down there, so I. But this, they wanted me to call tomorrow, so I brought it to you right away. So, and let, do I have, it looked like I got a lot of head knots, so I'll go with that. That's all I have. Anybody, anything else before, can I get to use the adjournor?